I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Alderman meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 2nd. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If anyone in the audience and also the board members could please make sure their phones are on silent, then we can go ahead and get started. And we're gonna start today with the invocation from Alderman Grant.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We have two vacancies right now.
Yes, sir.
Under North Carolina General Statute 168-74, in determining the quorum, those vacant seats do not count. So, we have two of three here, present plus you. So, we, under that statute, we have a quorum. I just want the minutes to reflect that.
Okay. In the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All two of you in favor? And I?
Aye.
Okay. The manager's report.
Yes, good morning. First thing I want to report on is the living shoreline project at Richard Peters Park. I'm pleased to report that the first living shoreline project for the town of North Toppsil Beach has been completed on October 18th. I've also talked to, since our finishing of the project, talked to the North Carolina Coastal Federation about signage for the project. They're working on it currently and it will be installed at the project site just basically to convey information about living shorelines in general, about the installation, and provide just another educational component to the park. I've already expressed interest to them to go forward with additional projects in the future. The goal is to have a demonstration of the different types of living shoreline projects throughout the town. The Channel to Jacksonville project, there was a meeting on September 20th with the Army Corps of Engineers in regards to the ICW crossing and to discuss the Channel to Jacksonville, the actual disposal area. Army Corps has awarded again the contract to Contral Contracting, who will place approximately 173,000 cubic yards of sand along the inlet area. There's a site meeting that we have scheduled with the Army Corps, their contractor in the town on November 9th at 11:00 a.m. to review the project area will be meeting on-site at that time. We relayed again that we would like the project to occur first, then we would come in following the Army Corps' project with our FEMA project to then place an expected additional 16,000 cubic yards of sand. Beach project updates, we're ready to kick off the season mid-November. Phase 5, last season's paused work is to resume November 16th by S.T. Wooton, who's the town's contractor, who will again be working from the Gray Street access. The tranche 2 work that was recently bid out in Notice of Award was given to C.M. Mitchell. That work will start mid-February and complete the remainder of Phase 5. The Phase 4 Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund grant, we received a letter of award from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Equality, the Division of Water Resources to be exact, announcing that $10.5 million in financial assistance will be awarded to North Toppsil Beach for nourishment that's been tentatively approved by the state at this point in time. The award is pending successful execution of a contract between the state and the town. I've submitted additional paperwork that they had requested last week and there is a placeholder, as you can see on the agenda for today, which is, will come later in the meeting under New Business for Resolution 22-0009. What we will have to do is, that is the next step for acceptance of this grant, is for the board to pass this resolution and then, once the resolution is passed, then the contract will be forthcoming from the state that we will be able to execute as the next step.
So, Alice, just for everybody's benefit, do we, will that bring us how far into Phase 4? Do we have a clue?
It's going to extend the project from the Phase 5 into the Phase 4 area, two and a half miles north.
Okay, so that's significant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before you leave, that also, that's going to be beach work, not just dune work, which is significant.
Yes, it's not a dune project, it's placing sand on the active beach.
That's awesome, thank you.
I also had an initial meeting with the engineers last week along with Carter Associates just to map out the logistics of the project and of course, the grant requirements that go along with it. The engineers right now are working on a timeline. Then, after they come up with a proposed timeline, we will work, I will work, sit down with staff and Carter's and the town's auditors to map out our cash flow and everything so that the timing for the project and the funding will all coincide together and, because it's a, it's a process that we just have to make sure we're very tactful in mapping everything out. The grant, the grant contract will have a term of two years to it. Also, if need be, grantees may request a one-year extension if need be. I don't expect that we will need to. Feedback I'm receiving so far is that engineering, from the engineer, that it'll start next season, so this will be the 2023-2024 season and that will be completed within that season. So, starting mid-November and finishing in April. And, once again, we submitted for permitting when we submitted the grant application. The permitting is still pending. County Beach Access 4, Fran has actually reached out to C.M. Mitchell for updated cost and first available start date to fill in the dune with that, with County Access 4, so I'm waiting on timeframe for that to start. Everyone knows that's a priority of the town to get that, that breach closed in.
So, with all of the sand that the county has pushed that ended up in their parking lot for the last storm, is the cost of this project potentially gonna go down?
Well, that's to be seen. They're actually, they're doing survey work right now and that was all part of post Ian.
Okay.
So, all of that will be surveyed, so we'll have current conditions to determine if it's gonna go up or down.
Okay.
I can't say at this point in time, but I'm sure there will be an adjustment.
No, but the template's changed, is your point.
The template has changed, so it, I'm not saying that they've put an adequate amount of sand where it needs to be. We may still have areas, and I know it's not under the building and we, our desire was to have it as much closed as possible.
Right.
Okay.
The initial plan was to remove, to, you know, work with the county, have the lattice removed and move the sand in. So, there's, you know, still gonna be some, I would expect an increase from last year's numbers, of course. But, again, we were lucky to have the county roll those funds over the, for us to be available this fiscal year.
Agreed, thank you.
Abandoned vessel removal request, still working on that. The North Carolina Coastal Federation contacted their contractor again right before Ian, who's been, of course, inundated with work right now in Florida. They're still waiting on them to finish up a couple of removals in this area, though, so that's promising that they will be back in this area at some point. They're following up with the contractor right now to see if they can estimate any sort of timeline, so I'm waiting to hear back from them. Hopefully, I'll be, hear back from them within the next week. They did say, depending on the cost, they may be able to cost, to cover the cost of removal through funding they still have available for, under grants, if it's in the $35,000 range.
So, are you working just with the idea of removing the rigging that's visible?
The rigging.
Yeah, okay.
And then this is actually, could be better news because I think the board had talked about expending our own money to get that out of there, you know, one way or the other. So, the fact that we might be able to get some money on that's a nice move, too.
FEMA funds, I've been working through various agencies to get our current FEMA funds released, which is always a process. Monday, we have received $3.8 million in FEMA funds that were due, so we're pretty much up to date with what we've requested. We have some things that we've, we've requested in the queue, but the large majority we have received at this point. Just going back to Hurricane Ian response, under the current declaration, Cat B emergency protective measures are available for FEMA reimbursement at this time. FEMA is still working to gather damages from around the state to determine if we're gonna get a full disaster declaration. I authorized engineers post Ian to start the survey that we just talked about, to do an assessment, just to calculate volume loss, you know, try to get statistics on where the sand moved. It's all information that regardless, we, is good to have going forward so that we know where the sand is, how much we've lost, what projects we need to look at in the future, in the near future, and just to have those, that ready. And plus, if the state does decide to do something more for Cat G work, we would then be able to submit the surveying and any restoration work deemed necessary from those surveys for reimbursement. The, last but not least, the website. We've officially launched the new website, October 26th. Also provided an invitation via the, our social media just for any suggestions, feedbacks from, from residents or users. To date, we received positive, all positive feedback so far from staff and, as well as outside users. Some of the features of the new site include the ability to complete most forms online, which is new. Dedicated projects page to find up-to-date information on planned projects and projects that are underway. That was, you know, it's gonna be good going forward with the launch of the beach project so that it'll be easy to find and hopefully easier to track for everyone instead of combing through pages of information. We also provided more detailed permitting instructions, which seems to have, you know, been, there's been a need for recently with all of the building. And also, real-time weather and rip current information, which is provided by a newly installed weather station here at Town Hall. So, if you come by the Town Hall sign, the electronics sign out front, you'll see the thing installed atop, that's the weather station that will report real-time wind information and wall. So, of course, help with storm response.
Just, yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Back to Phase 4 for a second. One is, congratulations to you, Bisac, Chris Gibson, $10.5 million grant. That we actually, it's a matching grant, but we're actually using the FEMA money from Phase 5 as the match. So, except for the, the cash flow in this thing, it's basically a zero cost to us, which is unbelievable. Nobody, a year ago, the idea that we could have done this much in Phase 4.
We have never accomplished anything like that before.
It's, it's mind-boggling. Just a couple of questions, I think you've already handled in there about the financing on this. We are not gonna do SOBs for Phase 4?
No.
It's a state reimbursement thing, but because it's not starting until 23-24, that means we should have gotten most of the FEMA money back that we would have submitted. But even with that, if I remember our cash position, and I know you and Carter are gonna walk through this anyway, my observation is we've got plenty of cash to basically pay the contractor, get reimbursed, and I'm assuming, you know, because Mitchell's doing the work. And the way the projects are set up now is you've got five. He finishes five and then four just continues the five works. For two and a half miles, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Almost to the end of Phase 4, if it's not to the end of Phase 4.
Correct.
Right, so money-wise, because of the way this is structured. And then also, I noted on here that you said it's a two-year contract with a potential extension because as Mr. Benson has mentioned before, it's taken a long time. We've got a lot of sand that's still going into 5 right now. 500,000 cubic yards, I think, is still left down there, plus all this sand. So, we're effectively talking about $20 million worth of sand going in 4 and 5 in the next two years, which is just incredible.
And, and of course, too, once we get rolling with the project and it starts, we'll know right away, we have an idea of how many cubic yards per day they should be, they should be placing, so we'll know if they're on target or if they're not and we'll be able to track that closely. And then, if, if we see any sign that this project may be early on, that it's gonna extend, we're gonna file for an extension right away, just in case. In the event that we would need one, just not to have, you know, a long period of time.
And then just one final comment, more than a question is, I'm really glad that you got the SOBs locked down. We got another 75 basis points coming from the Fed. I know that was more than the last one, but also the fact we don't have to finance this, this state piece, given where interest rates are, I think is a little coup for your team, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo what Alderman Grant just reported. I don't think we realize as a town what a change in strategy has occurred in terms of beach nourishment for this town. Getting a grant for $10.5 million to put sand on the beach is not something we've ever done before, to my knowledge. We've always borrowed the money. Well, this came about through what they mentioned is the Bisac Committee, the Beach Engineering Sound Committee. This committee was just formed, approved in past December and started meeting in January. And through the discussions of that committee and the advice of a coastal engineer that advises the Bisac Committee, we were able to apply for this grant. So, kudos to that process and hopefully, this is going to be the way forward for North Toppsil Beach in terms of beach nourishment. We are going to have support from outside granting agencies to help us provide sand to what really is a national seashore, that is North Toppsil Beach.
Just, just one final one, and the mayor, just to give you some idea of what a coup this is, we got more than 50% of the amount allocated by the state. I mean, think about that. This little town got, on this grant, we got more than half of all the money that got allocated by the state. Not bad.
And the other thing I wanted to comment on your report, Manager Durian, was the town website is a great website now. You put a lot of effort into making sure the content was up to date, not just that it looks different, the content was up to date. Ricky Suizo, our IT Director, had a big hand in this as well. But if you haven't looked at the new town website yet, it's really easy to use and very easy to read.
Yes, I agree.
So, great job with the town website, Manager, thank you.
It took me a whole 30 seconds to find all of the beach accesses on there the other day, where I used to have to dig for that, so.
That was good. And they're up to date.
And they're up to date, that's right, that's what I was looking at.
I was confused because the one by me's got a different one.
Yes, okay. Anything else? Oh, anything else for town manager? No? All right, the next item would be the open forum. Do we have anybody signed up to talk?
Jeff Meyer.
Okay.
Press that button, Jeff, please.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mike Benson, who appeared at our HOA meeting this past Saturday to explain some of the beach nourishment programs and things that were going on. We do appreciate your taking your Saturday morning mic to be there. Thank you very much.
Susan Meyer.
I wanna have the other one, please.
Okay.
Would anybody else in the audience, I could, please? Okay, then we're gonna move on to Mr. Fran Way with our coastal engineer update.
Can you hear us, Fran?
I, I can now, yes.
Okay, okay, we hear you.
Okay. Hello, everyone.
Hey, Fran, hey Fran?
Yes.
Back up one slide, just as a follow-up to a discussion we had about the Phase 4 state grant. Does that, I, I can't tell because of the size of the slide, but that looks like the, the state grant will cover everything in Phase 4 or just most of Phase 4? I can't tell because like, there's a line right at the end. It looks like it might be a tiny bit short.
Here's the, the successful.
Fran?
Yes?
Can you just, just quickly, just address the direction on the reasoning for the direction from going from Gray Street going north for the Phase 5 project? Because I'm sure we'll get questions on that.
Yeah, we. But in the spring, there's a seasonal component where you do get, you know, in this early summer, where you get mostly the predominant wave, climate, winded waves are from the south and that's pushing material to the north. So, we're just trying to work kind of with seasonal fluctuations in where the sediment transport is going.
Okay, then just one quick follow-up. If I'm looking at your schematic correctly, if I live in Phase Five, it looks to me like I've got about a little over 200 feet of beach that's going to be picked up. You've got 105 on the top and then you've got the slope coming down. But that looks like almost 200 foot of beach is going to be directly impacted by that sand. Is that right?
Yes, yeah. It's going to be similar. It's about 80 to 100 feet of beach, as Alden Grant just mentioned. In Phase Five, it's a little bit more than that, but it's, that's pretty similar, 80 to 100 feet of beach. So, that's a nice lot, and you know, additional beach out there as well.
And then Fran, just one quick one too. So, if I add up what we're doing in Five and Four here, we're pretty close to a million cubic yards of sand coming in to Four and Five in the next 18 months to two years?
Correct, correct. It'll be, it should be over, you know, over a million cubic yards, just over a million. So, yes, that's a, that's a, that is a very healthy, that's a great amount of material. That's almost similar to what, you know, the town put back in 2015. They put 1.3 million out in the entire Phase Five shoreline. So, this is, this is a very large nourishment. One of the larger kind of efforts in town history. And then here's County, the County Beach Access Four. And again, the mayor brought it up and then we are updating the volumes and required volumes and, you know, we did, we know that they did push material back into that Dune system. And soon, and Camel wants to see kind of updated plans. This is permanent already. You know, and we're working on updating the plans and finalizing the volumes. And as soon as we get that, we will, you know, and I have contacted C.M. Mitchell about getting out there and doing this. But we should have the updated volumes here, I would say this week or early next week. And we'll have updated volumes for pretty much the entire beach. Post Hurricane Ian. And Alice mentioned this already, the Core Navigation Branch, they're doing the maintenance dredging of the AWW, the channel in Jacksonville. And, you know, they're using, it's a lot of pipeline. But as Alice mentioned, Contral, Contral Contracting, the dredger, they're a good outfit and they can handle that pipeline. And they're going to place that material. And hopefully, it's about 4,000 feet, and on their design, they say it's about 4,000 feet of New River Inlet, of the shoreline in Phase One, you know, adjacent to New River Inlet. We should get, you know, that material. And that should be, and historically, this has been a very nice, you know, good project. The material is a slightly, you know, slightly finer than some of the stuff we're putting on the beach right now. But it's, you know, it's nice, it's very nice sand and it's desperately needed up in that area.
Before you, yeah, Fran, before you leave that, just real quick. A general comment, one is, this is about four times the size of the last dredging in terms of volume, correct? It was like 46,000 or something? Was the last time they dredged?
Yeah, I think they put a little bit more than that, but again, as you recall, they did, they weren't able to build a beach. And so, they put the material kind of in the near shore. And we weren't able to kind of, I think it was, you know, less, it was less than that, it was about half of that.
Okay. And then are we still, I understand we're still considering the pipe, putting a pipe in as a permanent structure there to be able to then control where the sand goes on that beach? Is that fair?
Uh. Are you saying a permanent pipe?
I think that, that discussion's still kind of in progress.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, it's one of the options.
Yeah, just one of the options.
I think that was an option that was going to be looked at at the site meeting.
Which they haven't, which they haven't, I mean, just so everybody understands, one of the options they're looking at that came up through Alice, our beach engineers, was instead of having the dredging kind of throw the sand where they can throw it, if we build a permanent structure, that would bring it farther south. It would allow us to use that pipe then to have the sand put where we want up in One instead of having it at the mercy of whoever's dredging. Is that fair?
And for future projects.
And for future projects.
Okay, yeah, and basically, I do think, and I know Chris Gibson has got a good relationship with Contral as well, our contractor. They're a good outfit and they should be able to build, you know, a pretty good beach and they should do it, you know, on time as opposed to the previous marine contractor. Town Beach Project Updates, the Phase Five Nourishment, as, you know, we'll start this, you know, November 16th and work north. And then the Tranche Two will start at Gray Street or south in February. The Phase One FEMA is, you know, I have 15,000, 16,000 cubic yards near Topsail Villas. We have the Core Project that's putting material in Phase One. And the New River Inlet Management, that's the plan, that's the EIS. The additional modeling should be finished this month, in November. And then we will have some time to post-process it, but then, you know, get, keep that EIS moving forward with the longer four-year model runs. And then, as Alice mentioned, we're working with DEC Associates regarding just, so, you know, mapping out cash flow with the Phase Five and the Phase Four projects. And even, you know, the other, other project going on, sea of planting, we're going to look at it with the Ian damage and permitting coordination, we're continuing the permitting coordination. County Beach Access and then kind of, you know, still working, obviously, the state grant Phase Four, we're still kind of working on that moving forward. So, and that's, that's it.
Does anybody have any additional questions for Fran? Mr. Benson, Mr. Grant?
Fran, I do have a request, I guess. A lot of us have been following the Ocean Isle Beach Terminal Groin. You've probably seen reports that they built a terminal groin in Ocean Isle Beach this past year. Everything is nice and dandy down there, protecting a lot of structures that were behind sandbags. My question is, in reviewing the cost of that groin, it took them 10 years from the time that they started the EIS process until they got the thing constructed. And the cost of the groin went up about 10 or 15, maybe 20% from what they initially were given. So, kind of my request is, Fran, could you review your cost estimates for the terminal groin that we're proposing? And see how much they would have changed, will have changed, and kind of maybe even extrapolate into the future with the expected inflation? Just kind of see where we are. And the other, the other part of this is the Ocean Isle Beach Groin, it was two, two different steps. They built the groin, but you have to backfill the groin. That's the whole purpose of it, to keep the sand on the beach. And I think the Army Corps paid for the backfill because it was part of their 50-year federal plan. So, that cost was separate from the groin itself. So, that's my question. The cost that we were estimated in 218, I think, included the backfiller and the groin. So, could you just maybe over the next couple of months, review what that might look like in three years, five years, depending on how fast this EIS process can, can move, which has been pretty slow so far? Over.
Well, I would, the only thing I would request is that we get an idea of how much that's going to cost for Fran to do that analysis before we approve him do it. Because I just feel like we don't have a crystal ball, so I think it's really going to be a guess for Fran to try and figure out what inflation and cost changes will be in three to five years. So, I don't know how many hours we're talking about, but I'd like to know that first.
No, I think that's, that's very reasonable. I think what Mike and I talked about this a little bit as part of like BISAC is, BISAC is trying to make an idea of what our plan looks like going forward. And what I would call the groin is, the groin is the elephant at the end of that because it's, it's down the road. And so, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, the focus of BISAC is to have a beach plan for the entire town. And so, where should we spend the money and those type of things and getting an idea of what that looks like? I'm 100% with you. Let's not spend $100,000 on a, on something like that. But, because I mean, I think what we're looking for is just a general estimate, that if it says it was X and today, they went from X to, to.
But just remember, we haven't even, we don't know that the groin is what would be recommended. We don't, we don't even know what our options are coming out of the EIS.
I'm with you, but one town just turned down the groin because the project got so expensive. They just backed out completely even though they had it in place because of cost. So, it's just that kind of made us aware of where these costs going. Because they literally just backed out of a contract, you know, to do the groin.
Well, I think then we could probably find out how long their groin was supposed to be compared to what ours is proposed and get an idea of easily, yeah, can we send that to Fran and take a look at that?
We, we got the numbers from the Ocean Isle Beach.
Yeah, and I, I have them as well. I looked at that. And it was pretty interesting was the lower bid, the lowest bid that could have got it. And we, you know, we worked with contractors and things on groins and other spots. It was like 11 million. Yeah, and then, but the second bid came in 17 million. So, yeah, it was, they were much higher. A lot of times, the Bullhead Island Groin was kind of the, one of the most expensive groins built, you know, back when it was built, you know, 10 or 12 years ago, but that was only 4.8 million. So, you know, we're following this pretty closely and I can get a good, I can give you a pretty good estimate just based on a few hours of work, conceptual estimate, not like a hard.
Right, right, that's all we're looking for. That's all we're, well, and also.
But it is because we're kind of astounded by some of these costs increase as well, ever since, you know, post-COVID. And it just continues to kind of go up. So, yeah, it's definitely an important consideration and I've noticed, we noticed it as well.
Okay, well, two comments. One is, you're the engineer on the Holden Beach projects. You've got a pretty good idea where costs are. Because that's what we were talking about. The second thing is, when I went down and looked at Ocean Isle and then looked at the contractor, he was using his own stuff. He looked like, the guy that was the low bid down there with that gap, you know, the equipment and stuff, when we went down and visited that beach, you could tell that was somebody that said, look, I've got a job that can take care of my stuff. I don't, you know, it looked like he owned most of the stuff and it was coming in there. So, it might have been a fill for him too. Because that kind of gap can't be explained just by economics, right? That's huge.
Yeah, the second bid was, yeah, I think the second, the seventeen million dollar bid, it didn't seem like that contractor had a whole lot of experience in building oceanfront groins. So, but, you know, hopefully, we can get, I'm working on a groin rehabilitation project in Follow Beach in South Carolina. And we're, you know, going to put that out to bid here soon. Those are rock scrutchers and we'll get it, we'll have a really good idea of kind of the climate, so.
What?
Are you okay if it's just a couple hours?
Yes. I mean, I personally am. I just don't want it to turn into, you know, 40-hour thing.
I would leave it to her discretion. I would leave it to Alice's discretion, but if it's a couple hours, I think the consensus is.
I'm fine with that, if you're fine with that too.
Okay. Anything else for Fran? Well, thank you, Fran. We appreciate you joining us today.
Okay, and then I'll see several of you at the NC Beaches Conference here later in the week.
The next item is the consent agenda. And I did want to state something. I don't want to pull anything out of the consent agenda, but I certainly hope that folks do read through the consent agenda when it is published with the board packets because there's so much information in there. A lot of times, we get questions, how busy is the police department? How busy is permitting? How busy is the fire department? The planning department? It's all in here. So, you can see exactly where everybody's spending their time and how much work is being completed. One of the things that always surprises me is the EMS calls that we support from our fire department. And that being the largest chunk of where their time is. So, anyway.
Just, can I follow up just one comment on that? And I don't want to pull it off the consent agenda, but the other thing that'd be interesting, I really liked when Kim had put together just a discussion of where we are. The only question I had for her is, this is just tracking it for that month. I understand most of our money comes in when property taxes come in. But if you look at this stuff, we're doing better than budget. She's got it by a month. I'd just be curious as to what we look like year-to-date, I think would be helpful, if not for this meeting, for the, for the next one. So, we're tracking against.
Maybe we could track that for our work session. Maybe that's something that gives, give her a little bit of time to pull together.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Yes, do I have?
The actuals are included in there as well. They are. That shows for the year.
It does, but it tracks against an annual number and another number. It's, it's, I don't have that much experience as to how government needs to track stuff. What we used to do is, we would model it versus, here's what I, you know, if I've got a million dollars I'm getting over the year, I don't just say, my first month says I'm 10 of a million. It says, I budgeted 10, I got 11. I'm one above budget or one below budget. It's not tracked that way in government stuff. And that's all I was looking for. It's just a general comment. It looks to me like we're ahead in the things that we're collecting, but they're not the material ones.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda to approve? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, under continuing business, this is, this is where we are going to do the oath of office for our two new Board of Aldermen members, Mr. Fred Fontana and Mr. Tom Leonard. Do you want to do them separate or together? Separate. Okay, so can we have Mr. Fred Fontana come up first?
I, Alfred Fontana. Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as Alderman for North Topsail Beach.
The duties of my office as Alderman for North Topsail Beach.
To help me.
And then you get to have a seat right up here? Right here? And Mr. Tom Leonard is next. You might have this memorized, Tom.
I got somebody I'm going to have hold the Bible for me who's very close, a friend of mine. It used to be our manager, Dave Gilbry.
All right, Ricky Anthony. I, Tom Leonard.
I, Tom Leonard.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as Alderman for North Topsail Beach.
Duties of my office as Alderman for North Topsail Beach.
To help me God.
To help me God.
I think you know where to sit, Tom. Okay, we'll let everybody get settled and then we're going to move on to the BISAC update from Mayor Proton. So we'll just let everybody sit. Okay, Mayor Proton.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the BISAC committee met on Tuesday, October twenty fifth with the manager's update, much of which you've heard in the manager's report to the board this morning. We have a couple of action items from the BISAC this month. First deals with committee membership. Unfortunately, uh, we've had an a seat open for a phase three representative for several months. We have no volunteer supply, so we made the decision to ask for an at-large member to fill that phase three seat. And, uh, we had two applications. We talked about the applicant, the candidates as a committee and the consensus was that Mr. Steve Schreiber should be appointed by the Board of Aldermen as a, um, member of the the BISAC committee. So this would be an action item for the Board of Aldermen. I don't know if you want to do it now or at the end of my report.
I I would prefer to do it as we go.
Okay.
Also, just just a clarification on that, Mike. That's the at-large position.
It's at-large.
So what we're doing is we're asking the Board of Aldermen today for a motion to appoint Mr. Steve Schreiber to the BISAC committee. So would anybody like to make the motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second for discussion?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, sir.
But then just just one quick thing before we leave that, and he's going to talk about the second position on the resignation too. Correct, Mike?
Okay, so, yeah, uh, at our meeting in October, uh, we had another resignation. Mr. Tom Garrison from phase two felt that he need to resign from the committee. And so we, uh, now have an opening for, uh, a representative from phase two. Uh, the committee asked the town manager to post notification on the town website calling for applicants that live in phase two to apply for that vacancy that has already occurred. And at the same time, because of the difficulty we had in getting a phase three applicant on the on the BISAC committee, we made this notification, uh, at large or any, you know, representing any phase. Emphasis would be given to somebody coming from of the phase two area, but again, uh, the application period is open, I believe, until November the thirtieth? Yeah, okay. So if you would like to be on this BISAC committee and live in phase two or any, uh, phase in the town, please apply for the committee.
Mayor Proton, maybe it would be helpful if you gave the folks listening an idea of how much time commitment you are looking for from the committee members.
Well, shoreline protection involves local, state, and federal rules, regulations, and engineering. So it can be as much or as little time as you like, but basically we want applicants to have an understanding of shoreline protection, the history of North Topsail Beach, which you can get by reading the chronology that's on the new town website in about thirty minutes to get the background. And from then on, it's just kind of following what's coming out in the news. Coastal Review Online has a lot of articles on shoreline management and coastal activities, but it's just keeping up with the new the new stuff in terms of shoreline protection. The main, the main goal of this committee is a strategy to look to the future. How we are going to continue to nourish the beach and North Topsail Beach in the future. As our name implies, we're also concerned about the inlet, obviously. You've heard a lot of discussions this morning about the new inlet. But soundside and sea level rise and soundside flooding, the living shoreline, those are all components of what this committee thinks about and does. And the committee makes, it's an advisory committee to this Board of Aldermen. So it's kind of like planning for the future of shoreline protection in North Topsail Beach.
Just before you leave that, it's once a month. And then just a clarification from Brian. Brian, do we need to accept a resignation from a subcommittee to this board? Because I'm not sure we did that with the last resignation.
There's a split of thought in the school of government historically. It needs to be formal action. Professor David Lawrence says he doesn't think that's a law anymore. Uh, the conclusion though is that better practices to take some formal action to accept that.
Okay, because I mean, like I said, this is not an elected position. It's an appointed position, but I guess that would be true if it was an order. And so in that case, I would make a motion that we accept the resignations of both, just as a way for both the candidates that resigned, just to make sure we cross our Ts.
And so do we have a second on that action item? Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Alderman Grant, just just to clarify, if I may. It's, the the purpose of taking official action is, what do you do if you don't take official action and someone says, I rescind my resignation? And you've already tried to appoint someone. It can get chaotic, so.
Okay, the next item, uh, is the Topsail Shoreline Protection Committee membership. Uh, former Alderman Don Hart was on, uh, the Shoreline Protection Commission. But, uh, the proposal before the board is to reorganize the way in which the town North Topsail Beach participates on the Topsail Island Shoreline Protection Commission. And we are proposing that in the future, that two members from the, that represent the five, one of the five phases of shoreline in North Topsail Beach, plus one elected official be our delegates or our commissioners to the Topsail Island Shoreline Protection Commission. And the reason we need to do this is because the the BISAC committee is now the kind of the strategic planning group for shoreline protection in North Topsail Beach. So this group needs to be linked with the shoreline protection group that's thinking about the whole island. And so what we are asking is that the board direct the BISAC committee to make recommendations for members who would then be appointed by the board to the Shoreline Topsail Island Shoreline Protection Commission. Questions or clarification?
Comment. I'm not sure that's what we agreed to do. Just so you know, my my feeling on the BISAC was that the board needs to make a decision as to who serves on this committee. We've got a meeting in December to talk about who's going to be on what committees. Because we would be right back to, one of the board members would have to resign from that committee before this came. And I don't think there's unanimity on the board that somebody wants to give up their seat on this thing. I think the, what I would ask we do is it's it's fine to consider this, and I think we should consider it at our meeting that we're going to have on December fifteenth. All right, sixteenth, is to have a discussion about laying out all the boards that are out there, who's serving on the boards, who's interested in serving on those boards. Because I I don't think, you know, one's an advisory committee, something else. I'm just saying there wasn't unanimity on this. I mean, that was Mike's proposal. My proposal is I didn't like the proposal because I thought this board ought to be making that decision after we discuss who sits on what board.
And I I was going to suggest that this item be tabled until we have our work session where we go through.
But I but I was asking for this board to give direction to the BISAC.
Okay, and I think we'll be able to.
Maybe I didn't say it that way, but that's what I was.
But I think what what Alderman Grant and I are saying is that we'd be able to give better direction after the work session.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Who is on the Shoreline Protection Commission now from the town? Fred's on and you're on, right?
Fred, Fred and myself.
Don resigned.
And Don resigned. Right. But we have an issue then with potentially with Fred as well if we make these changes.
That'd be part of the December discussion.
We could have that discussion.
Yeah, and I've I've been on that too as an Alderman, and it's a good place to be in terms of.
Right. I think the whole point.
So we're going to discuss it in December.
Yes, sir.
Right. I just said, the whole point of this thing is at our December meeting is when we ought to be, we have two new Aldermen. Okay, and, you know, if Rick is serving on this committee and Fred wants to be on that committee, of course, he would never do that to me, but putting that aside. But I think that we ought to step back from this thing and say, how do how do we share the response, Brian? Who's interested in it because of the time commitments and things?
And where are we lacking? And what are we not?
Exactly.
Doing, so.
Uh, the only other, well, two other things in the report that you have before you is, uh, an update on the Water Summit. I won't say a whole lot about that other than it was a, uh, event sponsored by Representative Rouser and Representative Greg Murphy, uh, in Wilmington. Last month, it was a high-level discussion and had a lot of leaders of various state government agencies and and nonprofits like Farm Bureau and Swell and Water Conservation to get these people, you know, talking about flooding issues in the whole watershed from the headwaters of the Cape Fear River, the Neuse River, the New River Inlet, flooding issues along those watersheds. And it was, I think, a really good way to bring these groups together. And the other thing was, uh, as you probably know, may not know, the Coastal Resources Commission adopted at the October or September meeting the new inlet hazard areas recommended by the Science Panel in two nineteen. And shortly thereafter, the Division of Coastal Management realized they needed to re, uh, revise a couple of their, uh, recommendations in the rules and regulations. So adoption of the new inlet hazard area, which for New River Inlet would move from Building One in Topsail Reef all the way down to the St. Regis. So it's quite a big difference in area of structures that would be subject to rules and regulations of inlet hazard areas. But this will be adopted by the CRC, but it's just going to be delayed. That concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
So the inlet hazard area, my previous understanding was that it had been adopted, but it wasn't going to be effective until, I want to say, the November timeframe. So are we saying that they've rescinded the adoption of it or they're just postponing the implementation of it?
Well, they're revising the rules, so they had to postpone the adoption.
Okay, so it's not adopted?
It's not adopted.
Not adopted. Okay, that was the question I had. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mayor Proton? Okay, we're going to move on to new business and we're going to start with Alderman Grant for the beach.
I'll try to try to keep this relatively short. Um, when you look at what just happened with the ten and a half million dollar grant, uh, for phase four, we were very fortunate in that we had, um, Chris Gibson with the expertise and our town manager, who actually wrote the grant application, to be able to get those things done. I don't think that we can rely on that going forward. These things, actually Fred and I talked about this once, about writing grants. And so what I would propose, to keep it short, is that we ask, um, the town manager to put together kind of an RFQ as to what she thinks we need for that gap and then bring it back to us as a board, uh, because there's so much money out there. And so we're going to know in this conference that's coming up. But we were very lucky because we did have a town manager that could write this thing because this this thing came together literally within a month. Finding out, um, and we had to, we were qualified for it because of, you know, her ability to write the grant and those type of things. These are very specific. And, I mean, I hate to use the word we need to spend money to make money, but the fact that we just picked up ten and a half million dollars in a grant tells us that we can get these things done. But there's going to be times where it's got to hit right now and get it done. And so my recommendation is that the board direct, um, the town manager to put together an RFQ, uh, that she would circulate to us with the things that she thinks that we need to be able to to write grants and to get the resources in place. Um, no different than, uh, when Mike and I were talking about the BISAC, part of it to bring on Chris Gibson to give us the technical advice. I think this is a gap we have right now.
Well, and it's not just beach. So it would be grants, it's all kinds of grants that, you know, some we have missed out getting.
You got it.
You know, we've been turned down, so.
I I used the wrong term. It's everything. I mean, it's on the sound side. There's grass, there's all kinds of grants out there. But to find somebody that has the specific knowledge, I know when Fred was telling me his history, he's written a lot of grants, but nothing along this line. And his advice was, you got to get the people that know how to write this stuff. Is that fair, Fred?
I would also say, um, I know we don't have this as a budgeted position right now, and I don't know how compensation typically works for grant writers, if it's, you know, a an hourly rate or if it's a percentage of, um, approved grants that are received. So I would look for some direction to, uh, Mr. Darian, if you could provide that as well.
I mean, and and just, you know, full disclosure, one of the things that I talked to her about in this was if we sign a contract with somebody for X dollars, and let's just say it's a, an annual contract, you you put a clause in there that you can terminate it after a number of days.
Understand.
You know, for example, if we spend, you know, we're not going to, if we spend fifty thousand dollars, okay, for three months and we get nothing back, then we just terminate the contract. And my point, though, is if we're going to try to get this money, I mean, our, right now, our experience, and I think Mike talked about this again, being able to have BISAC and be able to put this thing together that quickly to get a unprecedented amount of money for the town and frankly, no cost except for, you know, waiting for the state to reimburse us, just tells us that we need to really start taking advantage of this and we need to get the resources. No different than we brought Doug Carter in for the SOBs, um, so.
And, um, I'm just making a a list and, um, Mr. Darian, we can touch base after it to see what might be appropriate to kind of talk through at the work session, even if it's not, even if it's not formally created. I know you, I know you have nothing to do. I know, I know you have nothing to do, so. Okay?
Now she's got till December anyway.
I know. Okay, the next item is Mr. Olds from Becker Morgan Group to talk with us about the fire station number two. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Mayor Alderman, just getting a presentation. Turn this on. Not sure where you want me to start exactly, but I thought it might make sense just to revisit how we got here.
Can I, can I just start out by saying, we're at a critical point in the planning process of the fire station at this point where I felt necessary was to bring Ernie in to share the plans with the board for any feedback, and in specific, in regards to the LEED certification. We're at the, we're at that moment now in the process where the board's going to need to make a determination whether they want to continue to pursue LEED certification or decide if it does not make sense at this point to do so financially. So, that's why I've asked him to come here to talk about, we met previously, to bring to the board any other alternatives that are out there that he's going to talk about, like Green Globe projects and so forth. So, as he's going through his presentation, just please keep that in mind that I'm going to be asking at the end of this on which direction the board wants to pursue in regards specifically in regards to LEED certification.
And can you just, for everybody that's here and also new members on the board, explain what you mean when you say LEED certification?
And, well, I'll let him explain it because that's, he'll, he'll be able to fully explain and go into more detail.
We'll cover the whole, the whole thing. So, I wanted to step back and kind of review where we were. Where, it was interesting to see Mr. Gilbreth. We actually started in two thousand and sixteen looking at a potential replacement fire station. And I remember touring, touring the south station, and I think it was two and a half feet of water had been in there previously. And I thought, how are you guys even making this work? And, and this is two thousand and sixteen, and then that was before the hurricane. So, it's, the station is just basically rusting away, you know, and as you know, it's on a relatively low elevation at about five and a half feet. The new FEMA regs are out, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the new flood elevation in that area now is like plus twelve. So, we're, we're in a, we're in a bit of a hole. Anyway, the, the point of bringing that up is that we, we started by looking at the needs of not only the replacement fire station, but perhaps expanding it to include possibly public works, possibly the police station, possibly acquiring more land, because that was really the, the thing that was hemming everything in. A lot of need and not really a lot of room to do it with. So, we explored that during one of our phases, and it was determined that we really couldn't acquire the additional land. So, let's go back and get as much fire station as we can on the space that we do have. And that's what this rendering here depicts now. We've met with Chief Sourd and determined over the course of several months, it's a four-bay fire station. These are big overhead doors. It's a tall bay. It, it fits modern, modern equipment. There's bunk space in there, semi-private bunk space as well, offices, training areas. I mean, it's really a full service. It's what a modern coastal fire station should be. It was important to us that we decide first what the town needed, what was important to the town, and make sure that our fire station respected those needs. In doing so, you're on the coast, literally on the coast. This is not some inland fire station where you have a little more latitude on, on what you're going to do. You're going to have flying sand and debris, winds, significant winds, significant flooding. It's not something that's normal for a lot of inland fire stations. We've done a lot of fire station work on the beach and the coast. We've got Wilmington's River Lights Fire Station getting ready to bid now. Fire Station in Saukisty that's going to be bid in January. And two other stations in Delaware working on right now. So, we're seeing this all the way up and, up and down our coast. We feel pretty comfortable when we come to you and say what we, what we believe the recommendations are. So, I've got essentially a thirty-five set of, a thirty-five percent set of plans here I'm going to leave with you. It kind of gives you kind of where we are at this point. Alice had asked that we, we take a look at LEED and the impacts of that. And we've done a very thorough analysis, and we've reached some recommendations for you on that. LEED is a, it stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And it's essentially started about twenty years ago to get the building industry to be more respectful of, of the cost to the environment of the way we use buildings, energy expenses, operational expenses, things of that nature. And it was good in the beginning because it really did promote and prompt building owners to say, can we operate at a lower cost? Can we save energy? And they were really the, the leaders in, in doing that. Over time, as the industry made equipment and products that could meet some of these energy standards, the codes came up as well. So, twenty years later now, meeting the LEED requirement has gotten harder because the baseline got moved up. My engineers tell me that it's about a thirty percent improvement over twenty years ago, the minimum energy requirements. So, you're getting a pretty strong performance building in the first place. But nonetheless, we took a look at the LEED process and see how it, how it might fit here. It's a points process, and it goes from zero to a hundred and twenty or something like that. To get certified, you need forty points. The process, we use the process in Wilmington on their station. We're shooting for LEED certified there, forty points. The first thing we do is a little analysis that takes us through a bunch of categories. It's a little tabular sheet. And it's things like indoor air quality, materials and resources. Covers things like recycling, covers things like waste management, where materials are produced and delivered from. Obviously, energy savings, light savings, plumbing, water savings, things of that nature. And you go through that checklist, and you see, what do you think we, we can do here and what can't we do? You like to come up in the middle forties if you're going to get certified. Forty to fifty is certified, silver is fifty and so forth. We only came up to thirty-one when we got, we went through in the first place. So, we're like, mm, this is, this is starting to challenge us. So, the, the bottom line is that because of where we're located and the, the high level at which the code requires us to operate, and the kinds of things that a fire station requires, three hundred and sixty-five day operation, we're occupying virtually all the site, so we don't have any extra site. So, we're not making green space. At the coast, things like solar energy are difficult. I don't know if we want to put a solar field on our roof, given the kind of winds we have and the kind of rains we have. We looked at geothermal, but we don't have any land to do that because we're covering with heavy-duty concrete pavements. So, at every turn, we're kind of getting sort of pushed back. So, what we, what we did, we, I came to Alice and said, look, I think we can, I think we can get close, but I'm not sure we can get all the way. And what does it cost to get, make that LEED? And I'll talk about some energy things here in a second, but just the process part of it is important, too. In order to do LEED, you have to hire a third-party consultant and a commissioning group. I got a price on the guys we're using in Wilmington. It's fifty-two thousand dollars to take you through the process. The town needs to register the project, and there's four or five thousand dollars worth of fees for that. And then have a, a town administrator, if you will, someone that's kind of keeping an eye on it. Maybe it's Alice, maybe it's not. But there's obviously some time potentially expended with that if you had to hire somebody even part-time. And then the designers then have to go through a series of calculations and energy modeling. On the mechanical side, for example, they basically, we have to tell them what all the insulation values are, the orientation of the building. They have to design two systems, two complete systems, and the energy model both. The second system has to outperform the first by a certain value to get any points. The best they could come up with was a ten percent improvement. Yet, and I'll, I'll talk about these in a second, but yet, there's additional expenses to get there. So, every, again, as we're going, we're thinking, eh, this is just not, not looking good. So, I wanted to, to bring the details to your attention. So, let's talk about exactly what I, I mean here. Yes, sir?
Before you, you leave that, so you went into this with an open mind as to how to get this thing. You didn't go in any, there was no preconceived notion, I'm going to go this way or I'm not going to go this way. You were basically saying, look, I'm going to consider everything as I go down this path.
Right. That's correct. But I, but I should add that normally, the way LEED is set up is you decide we're doing LEED first. And then you figure, well, what can I do if I do LEED? What can I build here? And if LEED were the thing you had to do first, you wouldn't build as large a fire station. You, there would be things you wouldn't be able to do. You would just say, fine, I, I want LEED more than I want the function of the station. You would have to reduce that because you have very little site. We're not in an urban area, so you don't have a bus. You know, you're not in a brownfield, it's on the beach. I mean, there's so many things that LEED works well with in urban areas and redevelopment areas and greenfields. It's just, we're out here on an island. We're not near anybody. You know, we're a hundred miles from the nearest brick factory or whatever. I mean, you know, everything, as you know, is a bit of a push-up. So, but yes, so we went into it with a-
What you're also telling us is, we're going with, we, the fire chief and team believe that we need four bays. And what you're telling me is we would be sacrificing the ability to house trucks and equipment and stuff in there if we went this way. So, it's, I mean, no offense, it's a public safety versus a LEED's kind of analysis, right?
Correct.
You know, if you, a smaller firehouse means less equipment, less everything.
Right.
Is that fair?
That's fair, that's fair now.
Well, we didn't talk, we did not talk about compromising on bays or anything like that if we were going to pursue the LEED certification.
No, no, no.
I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying is, public safety is, I mean, in my mind, you know, I'm not the expert, you are. Public safety is the paramount concern that I would have in building a fire station. Because if, if the only way you could do a LEED's thing was to have one stall on that, on that property, that really doesn't meet the town needs, so.
Well, and, and to your point, we thought public safety was what we should follow. So, we followed that. So, then I asked the engineer, so give me some examples, I'm sorry, Mr. Leonard?
Before we, before we move off-
Yes, sir.
That, you gave us a ballpark figure in terms of dollars, what it would cost for the LEED's analysis and all that. Any idea how long all that would take to do?
It adds about forty-five days to the whole process. I mean, it's not tremendously long, but you have to, and your attorney could, could confirm, you might, you might have to use quality-based selection to go find the consultant. I don't know if you can just go hire one out of the blue. But, you know, the, the permit, or the, the RFP process for the consultant could take you thirty, sixty days, depending on what you typically would do. But the actual additional work, it's primarily in the modeling and then in the submission and waiting for LEED people to tell you if you, if you have your points. So, it's, it's, that's not really the killer. I, I would say the LEED component adds about a hundred thousand dollars to the process on, on both sides. And regardless of the size of, of, of the building. So, on the energy-
That's separate from the cost?
Yes, sir. Yes, this are just, these are just fees.
That's the start.
These are just fees. So, in, in terms of energy, for example, and I'm not a, an engineer, so I'm going to try to keep it kind of in layman's terms here. The base system that our engineers thought might work as a LEED starting point was essentially a rooftop air conditioning system like you might find in our conventional commercial building. That, right now, is pricing out at about thirty-three bucks a square foot. So, for a job of this size, that's about four hundred thousand dollars' worth of just HVAC equipment. So, we've got to then find a system that's going to improve the baseline by a certain amount. What they were able to come up with is if we went to a system called a variable refrigerant flow, and that's essentially like a compressor, the compressor pushes different amounts of refrigerant according to its needs. So, it's a little, it's, it's much more sophisticated. That's going to save you about five percent annually, cost savings. But it's going to cost you forty-five bucks a square foot to install, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. It would take you over two hundred years just to recover the five hundred dollars. But, I mean, you'd, you'd have a LEED plaque. So, I mean, I'm, I'm being a little snarky, but I just-
That's an expensive plaque.
Yeah, so, but-
So, so if I could interrupt you, so pretty much all we're going to get is to say we have a LEED building, and that's costing us a lot more money for very little return.
That's the my, that's the bottom line I'm, I'm bringing to you, but I don't want you to feel like you're getting nothing. This is not coal in the stocking. You're getting a really fantastically well-performing building from an energy standpoint. It's going to be better than any of the other municipal buildings you've got on a cost per square foot basis, there's no question about it. Because the energy codes are so high. We're using LED lighting because that's all you can do anymore. Back twenty years ago, you know, incandescent was very energy costly. You put in, in LEED, you put in LEDs, now the LEED points go way up, and we don't have those advantages anymore.
But the, the example of the HVAC system, I think, is very, is, is, is very telling because all of us in this room who own property here have had to live with how quickly an HVAC system turns into rust. Is, is a real, is a real eye-opener, for one. But two, you know, you're right, we'll never, we'll never get our money back out of that, even, even if it was more reasonable than that number that you gave us simply because, you know, a good HVAC system here lasts about fifteen years if you're lucky.
You're absolutely right. And there's nothing we can do about that.
And a follow-up question, that pretty much a LEED's building will crumble in a hurricane just as quickly as a non-LEED's building.
Well, I can tell you, this, this may be the only thing standing on an island if, if we get a Cat Four or something like that. This building is going to be rock solid, so.
With or without LEEDs.
With or without LEED.
But the other thing, just, just for a clarification, I know that you're talking about energy savings and those type of things. Because this is going to be a much more modern building than we have today, aren't we going to have substantial energy savings anyway because of the equipment? I mean, how old is this firehouse? Thirty years old? I'm just saying, if I, if I'm looking at, you know, when, when we used to be in the gas business, we used to say, every time you change out a, a gas furnace, it goes from sixty percent efficiency to ninety-five percent efficiency. You know, we're already going to be a much more efficient operation, regardless of whether it's LEEDs or not.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if it's important to document or present that so that you understand you're getting that, that upgrade, absolutely.
But that's a savings of what we're paying now.
Yes, yeah, clearly.
I think in the beginning, Ernie, we were thinking LEEDs because we were thinking energy savings for the town. But you pointed out pretty clearly that, yeah, it's going to be too, too expensive to save money in this case.
That's, that's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's unfortunately the, the conclusion that we're, that we're, we're coming to. Again, having said that, I don't want anybody to feel like they're being short-changed in any way.
And again, too, when people look at LEED certification, they're looking at the environmental impact, not just the financial. So, that goes along with it as well.
Right, right.
Well, but even if we didn't have, even if we didn't try to achieve full LEED certification, if there are options that were discussed that you and Chief Sourd think makes sense to pursue, then we certainly, as a board, would want those to be included.
Right. And our common building practice today, even without LEED, is to recycle the material. So, the building itself that's there has value, it's going to be used productively in recycling. We typically try to source materials which are made in the state where we can do that. Recycling materials that are available for, say, for carpets and floor tile, I mean, all of that stuff. And we're really trying to do our best with that. Paints are going to be the low VOC with the exception of the engine bay, which is probably a urethane or an epoxy floor. So, where we can, we're certainly going to do that, and you're going to get a lot of great advantages. But we're not going to get a plaque. So, I, I don't know how important, you know, that was. And Alice asked us to look at Green Globes, which is an alternative. It's about the same price, it's easier on us slightly, but it's about the same thing. So, most of our clients are interested in, in the, the daily energy savings. Most of our municipal clients can get the capital expense, they struggle to maintain the building. So, we want you to have a building which is affordable to maintain. And that compromise, I think, to me outweighs the plaque. But I understand, it's not, sometimes the, the plaque means a lot, so I don't want to throw too much cold water on that, but.
Okay.
So, with, with that, I would like to leave the set of plans and take a look at that. We've, we've talked with Deb Hill about flood issues, because we do have some significant issues with that. The building sits in a residential zone currently, so we've got some non-conformities that we need to discuss. Her recommendations to come before the board here and have a public hearing and handle it that way so that those issues can all be fleshed out at, at one time. And from a schedule standpoint, we're ready to deliver toward the end of, of January. The issue's going to be permitting on the civil side. It has gone out in the last couple of months, from two months to about six or eight months on the civil permitting. And I don't know if it's going to get better or not, but.
So, are we thinking that it might be the August timeframe before we're even shovel-ready with this project?
Our engineers say the worst case would be July. We can pay for the express permitting and, and update that a couple of months. So, we're going to try to get done soon, so you have the option of going express. But we'll also judge how, how the permitting schedule has been going. And if it's coming down, then we would probably advise going straight.
Who approves the, when you say the permitting schedule, does, is this the county?
No, it's, it's, no, it's, it's, it's stormwater, and it's done through the Wilmington area office. And they are so backed up, and they don't, haven't hired anybody new, and it's, it's just getting to be frustrating.
So, there's nothing that we could do on our county side or anything to try?
I don't, I don't think so, no, ma'am. So, we just hope it improves.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? No? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. You're going to, you're going to be happy when you're done, but I just wanted to make sure we're, we're being- we're, we're being transparent and clear with you. I wish we'd figured this out earlier, but I think we're at a point where we, we understand very clearly what the pros and the cons are.
Okay. And I, I believe, Mr. Darian, that it's pretty clear from the board, that, as I said, I certainly want to make sure this building is exactly what is needed for us. So I am not ruling out, you know, I'll use the HVAC as an example. I mean, if that's something that you both really feel should be included, I would expect that that would be in a presentation back to us, but I don't think we, I don't think the board is looking for the plaque. Okay.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
She just wanted some direction.
Yep.
So unless anybody disagrees with that direction.
All right, I'll go ahead and leave the rendering and the, and the set of drawings here, and feel free to, to call us with any questions or concerns.
And has this rendering already been approved by the chief and by Mr. Darian?
We've shown it to you, and we're happy to make any changes you would like to have, but it just still give you an idea where we are.
Has the HVAC unit's been relocated from the roof?
We're this close. Yeah, we think we have a way of doing it.
I'm waiting to see the final, the plans.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're working with the site guys right now and topography.
So this gives us something to start with.
Yeah, we're very close to doing that.
And then where would, just from our own perspective, where would these, could we possibly put these plans up on the table upstairs, so that if anybody would like to see them, they can come in and take a look?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I had one question, being a new person, maybe I, I missed it. This site is, is the site of the current firehouse?
Mm-hmm.
So have you got a plan to keep the current site operating while construction is going on?
That is something that we have been working on, Mr. Darian and Chad and, and myself have been looking for a site to relocate the firefighters to during the construction process, and the challenge is, is trying to keep it as close to the current site as possible so that service is not impacted at all. So we are working on that, and we do not have a solution yet.
Yeah, I, I-
We'll move it in with you.
I could offer, on a prior project, we had the very same situation, where the only place to put the fire station was where it was. They ended up building a temporary garage out of essentially like a, like one of the sheds you buy at Lowe's kind of a thing, but it was a kind of a thing, and, and brought in a mobile construction trailer, and they just camped out of that for, you know, about a year.
And we have, we have talked about a similar solution, that's not our first-
Right, no, no.
First choice, but-
All right.
Yeah, Chad and I vetted various options so far, and one of the worst-case scenarios that we had presented to the board in the past, and I will provide that information to the new members, but is Rodney Knowles Park is a potential site, worst-case scenario that would, when we thought this through, cost-wise with putting a trailer there, like where the porta, portable toilets are right now, that would at least allow us to put the infrastructure in place for future growth, as far as planning for facilities, their restroom facilities. But we're still vetting other options and looking at different properties in that area, and as those opportunities come up, I'll be bringing those to the board.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on to the Coastal Storm Mitigation Fund grant, Mr. Darian?
Yes, thank you. So we went over all the details of that, and I reported earlier that the next step is passing this resolution at today's meeting that I provided to you all last week. So the Resolution 2022-009, and Brian, do you want me to read it?
The resolution?
Yes.
Now, you can just, if there's a motion to approve it, has the-
It's, because the, it was not attached to the agenda packet, it was provided to the board. I used the Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund grant as a placeholder, not knowing what would be the next step needed. I expected that we would need to execute a contract, but then on Friday, I was informed that we needed a resolution, so I prepared a resolution on Friday and sent it to the board.
I'd, I'd go ahead and read it, sorry.
Yes.
I tried.
Yes, I would, okay. Okay, so the resolution reads that whereas the town in North Topsail Beach Board of Alderman desired to sponsor Phase Four beach nourishment to nourish four miles of beachfront at the southern end of North Topsail Beach, now therefore be it resolved that the board requests the state of North Carolina to provide financial assistance to the town in North Topsail Beach for Phase Four beach nourishment in an amount of ten and a half million dollars. Number two, the board assumes full obligation for payment of the balance of project costs. Three, the board will obtain all necessary state and federal permits. Four, the board will comply with all applicable laws governing the ward-up contracts and the expenditure of public funds by local governments. Five, the board will supervise construction of the project to assure compliance with permit conditions and to assure safe and proper construction according to approved plans and specifications. Six, the board will attain appropriate easements, right-of-ways, or suitable dredge material disposal areas that may be necessary for the construction and operation of the project without cost or obligation to the state. Seven, the board will ensure that the project is open for use by public on an equal basis with limited restrictions if on public property. Eight, the board will hold the state harmless from any damages that may result from the construction, operation, and maintenance of the project. Nine, the board accepts responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the completed project, adopted by the Town and North Topsail Beach Board of Alderman this second day of November 2022.
Any questions?
Just one quick one. I'm assuming, Brian, that, and Alice, this meets all of the criteria that the state, like, they're not going to kick it back to us because they don't like the language in this, correct?
No, and I actually, I pulled this from templates. I went back to the state asking, because they typically provide templates-
Right.
-for each different, different projects and grants. They did not have a template specific to this one, so what I did was I pulled from their other templates and, and captured everything on there, and then put it back to them, saying, let me know if I missed anything, and I-
Right, so my only question is, do you want to put one more clause in here? The catch-all on something like that, or is this going to be, you understand what I'm saying? You have something that basically says, and anything else the state deems-
Can you create any preface about, got to do?
I just don't want to kick back to us, because they said you missed a sentence in this thing. If there's language we can put in there as a catch-all that doesn't allow the, you know?
And that might be something you might be able to capture in the contract, would be the contract?
Whatever, whatever you guys think is sufficient, I just don't, we don't want to hold this up again. We could have a special meeting if we need it, but, I mean, I think this is too important and, and, you know, sometimes getting stuff back from the state timely is pretty difficult, although we are appreciative of the grant.
Yes, very.
Uh-uh, attorney has his pen out.
How about a number ten? How about a number ten, that the board shall comply with any additional state requirements with respect to this grant?
I think it's all-
Perfect, is that okay?
Yeah.
And if you can update that today, Alice, I can stop back in and sign.
So you want a motion?
Yes, may I have a motion?
Move to accept the resolution as amended?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go. Okay, the next item is the second open forum. So I know that we had Ms. Meyer on there, I'm not sure, do you want to go first, Susan?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
Hit the button.
My question is just a little more clarification on Fran's presentation on Phase One, that forty-five thousand cubic yards was mentioned but not mentioned, and back and forth, and I just want to know where that stands.
So the permit application that he filed was up to forty-five thousand cubic yards, but the amount of sand that was allocated by FEMA for Dorian was close to sixteen thousand cubic yards.
Right.
So if there were another source of funds somewhere that we could put more sand on the beach, we would already have a permit, would not have to wait for that permit to come for additional sand. But at present time, we have sixteen thousand cubic yards of sand from FEMA to put in that permitted area.
Okay, I just remember monies being available a while back, or the thought that monies would be available. Did that just not happen, or what happened to that?
That, the million and a half, yeah.
That, that was the state money that required a technical correction. They would not release the, the money, because there needed to be a technical correction, because they did not approve in the government higher up what they needed to approve. So we had to wait on a technical correction, which is why we're at the point we are now with waiting to this point in time for this environmental window.
Okay, so we're still waiting for that, that's still a possibility?
It went through.
Uh-huh.
So everything is, yeah, everything is a go at this point, just making sure we've got all the permitting and being able to start. Any ideas to go forward with the Army Corps project first?
The dredging.
The dredging.
Right, I understand.
For control contracting.
We'll see if we get any of that.
And then see, look at the placement, and then try to use those sixteen thousand cubic yards, plus or minus, to fill in where it's needed most.
Okay, so-
So let the Army Corps come in and do their project first, then our FEMA project to come in and follow second.
Okay, and when is that Army Corps happening?
This environmental window.
Right.
We'll know the exact timeline when we have the site meeting that's scheduled.
Okay, so there's a possibility that the, it'll be at the end of the site window, and we won't get that fifteen, uh-
Well, there's always a possibility of anything when you're-
Right. We've been waiting for sand for a long time.
But it sounds like the delay on this one was the technical correction and getting the approval of the funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it doesn't matter what it is, we're not getting it.
Just, just a question, maybe I'm confused. The hundred and seventy-two thousand we're going to get from the dredging, some of that's going to go-
Yes, yep.
Well, they hope it will. I mean, they don't know how far it's going to go. They say that every time.
No, no, but I think it's starting, when, I think Chris Gibson told us, Mike, and you can correct us, he thinks there might be, assuming we can get them to spread it the way that we want to, that there'll be enough actually to go all the way from the beginning of Phase One, almost down to the St. Regis.
I think the difference with this, Susan, is that we are actively trying to get them to put it where we're specifically asking them to, to benefit our project that's coming in behind them. But to your point, you know, that might be a headache that Mr. Darian gets to deal with every day, because they don't always put it where we ask them to.
No, they were supposed to put it there last time.
At the end of the day, it's an Army Corps project-
Right.
-that's completely funded by the Army Corps.
We're just like the leftovers.
But they have been, they have been very proactive with bringing us on board to make sure that we try to get the best placement for the town.
Okay.
Which I, I can't speak to-
Well, we can only do what we can do, and I do understand that, but it just seems that we never get it.
We always seem to run out of time.
Yeah.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that signed up for this open forum?
I didn't sign up, I never do. Cameron Kegel, thirty-nine oh two River Road. We don't know where that sand's going. You got the same contractor that was out there two years ago that drug their feet so long, they went from the end of the beach club to what, about the beginning of the beach club? Okay, they're going to start at the end again. Who is this "we" that gets to decide where the sand's going? Y'all, no, I'm talking, Mike, I'm like, I don't have any questions of you. Now, the second statement I would like to make is, for the first time in a year and a half, next Tuesday, I believe, we're having a revetment committee meeting. It is public. I haven't seen it announced, I haven't seen the word "revetment" spoken about at this meeting at all. I'm getting tired of people stopping me walking around in sandbags, asking me what's going on. I don't know. You folks sued the town. All those homeowners sued the town. Why they going to ask the people that they sued what's going on? Do they not have a lawyer that can coordinate all their questions with our town lawyer? I mean, it's getting a little ridiculous. They tell me they call town hall, boy, this was rolling out our beach right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Okay, then I'm going to move on to the attorney's report.
Your report.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the mayor's report. And I wanted to acknowledge Alderman Grant had pointed out that Lisa Carpenter is here in the back. She's our, one of the Republican candidates for the Anzo County Commissioner's seat, and we welcome you, and I'm glad that you were able to come to the meeting today. I was going to also thank Mr. Gilbride for coming, but he's already left, so I'll just email him later. I wanted to also echo, I brought it up before, but all the details in that consent agenda, a just, just phenomenal work effort by all of our staff and everything that gets accomplished every single month around here to keep the wheels on this bus. And I wanted to welcome the new board members. And I also wanted to say that you, we will be announcing, when we have all the details together, the work session in December, but we have a couple goals, at least I do, which is, we talked about getting through all the committees, who's on what, what might not be staffed, where are we struggling, like parks and rec. And I also want to make sure that we've got clear goals and objectives in place for this board for this upcoming year, so at the end of the year, we can measure our success against those goals and what our residents need us to be working on. Okay, I am going to start with Alderman Leonard.
I knew it. She always goes to the right.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for the kind words, and I want to thank the board for the appointment.
Oh, yep.
All right. We, we didn't have these the last time I was here. Yeah, rookie mistake. I'll thank the, the board for the appointment. I want to return to the board, because I had several items that I felt were unfinished business, goals, if you will, of mine. Primarily, those goals were to assist with hopefully removing the town's areas from Cobra that we've worked on in the past, and along with trying to work with the state on getting the restrictions removed from the, from, from the state's rules regarding use of state money for the construction of hardened structures. Both of those, I think, are big. I've engaged in discussions with Phil Shepard, State Senator Michael Lozara, regarding these issues. I've also talked to our lobbyist, Mike McIntyre, and we'll be seeing him later this week, along with our new representative, Carson Smith, because they'll both be at the Byway Conference, which I know some of us in this room, along with me, will be attending tomorrow and Friday in Wilmington. I'd like to wish everybody an early Happy Thanksgiving. I'd like to wish a happy birthday to the world's finest fighting force, the United States Marine Corps, celebrating the two-hundred-and-forty-seventh anniversary of its founding next week on the tenth of this month. We have a number of Marines in our various town departments, I'd like to extend a special Happy Birthday and semperify to each of them. Along those lines, I'd also like to wish a Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans, and we also have a significant number of veterans, military veterans on our staff and in our town departments, and I'd like to wish each of them a Happy Veterans Day. He's gone now, but my, my old friend Dave Gilbride was an Air Force veteran, too. Finally, Ricky, if you can put that up, thank you. On a summer note, as a town, we observe another important holiday this month, or date this month, I should say. We have a street in our north end named Gunnerie Sergeant D.W. Boatman Drive. Gunnerie Sergeant Boatman died on November fourth, two thousand and five, at Lansdell Regional Medical Center, Germany, from wounds sustained on this date, November second, two thousand and five, from an improvised explosive device while he was conducting combat operations in the vicinity of the village of Havania in the Al Anbar province of Iraq. As a member of the Eighth Engineers Support Battalion, Second Marine Logistics Group, Second Marine Expeditionary Force Camp Lejeune, Gunnerie Sergeant Boatman left behind a wife and two children. Semperify, Gunny. That concludes my report.
Pretty somber report. Just a couple things, the Shoreline Protection Commission meeting was last, attended last month. Couple initiatives, we're thinking about, talking about Topsail Island being a Blue Flag USA recognized beach. We're in preliminary discussions with the American Beach Shoreline Protection Association for that. We're talking about a coordinated Vitax eradication program from, from, uh, the dunes on the island. That's in discussion. We had a workshop last, uh, month at Alderman Fontan, attended on behalf of the town. I did attend the Water Summit, I've reported on that. And, uh, I did make a presentation at Topsail Reef HOA, uh, last Saturday. And I've already discussed, uh, how well the Newtown website turned out, so that's my report, Mayor.
All right, Alderman Fontan.
Okay, I'll, I'll be very brief. I, I do like, uh, would like to thank the board for my appointment and, uh, look forward to serving on this board for, at least until next November. I, I also echo, um, Alderman Benson's, uh, report on the Vitax. I think that's a, an, an issue that we need to definitely address and, and educate the property owners along the beach, that it, uh, it really doesn't help at all to replant, uh, sea oats if we don't do anything with the Vitax, because the Vitax will just kill it and the dunes will be nothing but sand to be washed away. And that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, very briefly, thanks to the staff for putting together an excellent board package, Dallas as well, and the presenters today. Congratulations to the new board members, hopefully you won't regret what you just said. And, uh, and, uh, like I said, thanks for people showing up and, um, I had one, went to one county meeting, and I will not tell you which of the two county commissioners said this to me, but they said, "Your bottom's not even gonna get warm because it's gonna be that short a meeting," and I think the meeting lasted thirty minutes. So, I was happy, because sometimes those go on, as you know, three and four hours, so, thanks.
Okay, so the next item will be the closed session, so I-
Before we, before we go into that, in Connie's absence, I just want to announce that the Christmas tree lighting will be Wednesday, November sixteenth, at six P.M. here at Town Hall. There will be a Christmas tree that's installed outside here of Town Hall, and we will have, um, refreshments, and Santa will be here as well.
Oh, Santa's coming too?
Perfect. At six P.M.?
Yes.
And we're gonna put that up on the website, right, so everybody will know, okay. Yours gonna be Santa, Tom. Okay, so do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make the motion that we go into closed session.
Pursuant, I'm sorry, Mayor, um, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A three and A six, to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss specific personnel.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are back out of closed session and I'd like to report that no action was taken in closed session.